4:30 PM, and if everybody could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just a quick update, we have, we have to go into non-public at 5:45 tonight. That is an hour and 15 minutes from now. We have a very full agenda with lots of things to cover. We also have public comment, of course. But we will have to have a hard stop at I-45 to go into non-public because there are things that need to be addressed. We also have a budget meeting later tonight and other board meetings as well. So with that being said, we will open public comment at 4:32. So if anyone would like to speak, you are welcome to do so.
Hi, Lacy Fowler. I was here a couple of weeks ago, or a month ago, talking about, I had a couple of issues, the low test scores and our health curriculum. And unfortunately, I missed the meeting last time. But reading your minutes, it looked like you guys went over the health curriculum in detail. And a lot of it is inappropriate. And so I know you guys are discussing that later on the agenda tonight. And so I just wanted to put my two cents as a parent. I have a daughter in second grade and a son in seventh grade. I went through your agenda tonight and I looked at your state standards versus the national standards. And so it appears that your state standards are mandatory where the national standards are not required. They're kind of a recommendation. So I went through them and I believe, and I would suggest to the board, and I would like the board, to basically set a policy to only accept the state standards and to not make the national standards the requirement for Seabrook. So that's kind of number one. And then number two, about the low test scores. I noticed how disproportionate we are with the other schools in the SAU. Southampton, Hampton Falls, Northampton are doing much better than we are test scores. I believe the numbers, I don't have the numbers on me tonight, but I believe when I read them out a month ago, we were 16% in math and 32% in reading, where the other schools were in the 70s and 80s in both reading and math. So that's crazy that we're so far behind. I'm not really putting the blame on anybody. I'm kind of putting the blame on everyone, including myself as a parent. There's discipline issues in the school. You guys had a whole meeting for a whole entire grade because of disciplinary actions. So I would love to see more discipline in the schools. Kids actually getting in trouble for things, for saying things to people, for putting their hands on people and not just being sent home for the day or given an ISS, like actually be reprimanded for their actions. Maybe that would help. I know I put a lot of time into my kids at home. And I know that other parents don't have that luxury to do so, but something's got to give. The teachers need to be supported. These kids are rude to the teachers, are saying awful things to the teachers and the student aides. Oh, I'm sorry, not the student aides, but the people that... Yes, thank you. They need to be reprimanded, the teachers need to be supported. We need to start teaching our kids things that they're getting tested on because it just seems, it's just so apparent to me that we're not teaching them what's on these NWA testings. Because to get a 16%, that's crazy. I mean, if it was 40 or 50, it's like, okay, we're a little behind. But 16 is just outrageous. And I do, like I said, I do a lot with my children outside of school. And my kids are still scoring low. So I don't think it's that these kids don't have the capacity to learn. I just don't think they're learning the correct things. Or they're being so distracted by other kids that have disciplinary issues that they aren't getting the time. So yeah, so there's huge thing. Another thing that really bothers me is, I've lived in Seabrook forever. I've gone to Seabrook schools, I've gone to Winnicott. My family's been here forever. And I'm the building inspector and the health inspector in the town. I'm invested into this town. And it just seems like Seabrook is the welfare to the SAU. It seems like we're giving the SAU all the money and we're getting absolutely nothing for it. I understand our school is larger than the other schools. I understand there's a lot of moving factors. I just feel personally that we're the cash cow. We are supplying all the money to the SAU. There are, there's a superintendent, there's three assistants superintendents. They're all making almost a million, like, I don't know, $500, $600,000 a year. Our little school is just so far behind. For the amount of money that we put in and the amount of great parents that we have in town that are interested and that volunteer, you guys included. I see you out on the softball fields, I see you at basketball, I see you at school events. We, we have a great town. We're not a welfare town, we're not a poor town, we're not a bad town. We're great and our kids are great. And I think it's time to step it up. And honestly, if it can't get done, I'm going to run for school board. And it is going to get done because I'm not going to stop until it does. So it's almost too late for my kid where he's in seventh grade. But my daughter will not be involved in a school at this level because this school is going to change. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'm here not only as a parent of boys who went through the school, but the grandparent of kids that are going through the school right now. I was involved with what was the PTA at the time. I stood up in front of the then-school board with daddy and a lot of other local town Seabrook people doing the same thing that these parents are doing right now. I'm talking mid to late 90s. What has been going on? We have been supporting a budget in our town that is equal to running our whole town. And we're at the bottom of the barrel. There should be a lot of heads hanging right now because nobody here is doing their job. It's our kids that are losing. It's our kids that go to Winnicott and are so far behind, a lot of them still. Look, look at your numbers to see how many kids are dropping out or going to night school because they're not getting what they need. Coming and asking for a budget, the budget committee takes months, months doing the town budget. The budget committee takes, gets one night, one night to look at the budget from this school. And I'll tell you, I fought for that one night for many years because I was the chairman of the budget committee. And still nothing more. You look at the books, the explanations that the department heads have to give to our townspeople. We're lucky if the, if the school board and/or the administration can answer questions. And it's not the school board's fault because they're, they're kept in the dark. That's something else I'd like to bring it up. Take back your school board. You, nothing happens unless you folks sign off on that. Remember that. Not the administration up at the SAU, not the administration in either one of these buildings, but you people are the ones that are responsible. You sign on. You should know and be allowed to know everything that's happening in this building. The administration has never liked it. But there's a lot of things that we as parents and grandparents don't like about this school. But yet, every year it's voting. The budgets and the contracts are voted right in because it's for the kids and for the school. It's not for the kids, just look at the records.
Hi, Philip Scolari, Anthony Scolari, father, grandfather. Recently, one of Anthony's best friends had transferred over to Hampton Falls and stayed back here. This is a boy who would be in eighth grade, now he's in seventh. Know what he said after two weeks of school? "I never felt so stupid to be back a grade and have no idea anything that's going on." That's how far behind we are at that level. So I don't know what game plan you guys would be able to put together as an administration, as a faculty, to get people to a respectable level from middle school. But I think maybe there's some things that go on in the schools, some options that kids have where maybe you could have these kids take a choice to, you know, work on the things that really matter, like their math, their grammar. Kind of important. Also, I, somebody told me that one of the higher-ups at the school said that "nobody's ever complained about Haven." Last year, I made a big stink about Haven to the principal. So much so that it turned into a big Seabrook community page post where the principal ended up sending out a mass email and a mass voicemail based on some of the content that this person was presenting. And they didn't do it in a way that was set up with an option for us to opt our kids out of this content. It was backdoored through that, this is in the class, the Homet class. Person came in as a speaker for that class. So it was backdoored in. And then the principal tried to, "Oh, I didn't even know he was a speaker." Oh, he played really dumb until I turned it into a hoopla around the community page. And then I got a phone call from, like, "Oh, the person from Haven." So I don't know why these people are getting a good amount of our students' times in any way when we have these test scores. Also, Anthony has told me that there's a lot of selective accountability for things that go on in the school. So certain kids get passive for doing stuff that's atrocious because of, you know, certain boxes they may fit into, or whatever it is. But there's selective accountability. If you don't have equal accountability, you're not going to have equal progress in any way, whether you talk about school or society. Equal accountability is everything. And when you start being selective with accountability, then you're going to see people see that and then the kids are going to stop following along with that. When someone's a distraction and they just let it go because, "Oh, well, he has this problem," or "this is that, and this is that." That distraction doesn't go away. That's going to keep scores down. Kids get distracted, that's what they do. So I don't know how you plan to fix anything when you're so far behind. It's almost insurmountable to see these test scores. But I really hope that, you know, accountability becomes a thing. If you have kids who want to achieve, give them more opportunity to achieve. I don't feel like everybody moves at the same speed and everybody has to be, you know, hamstrung because, you know, makes everybody feel nice that they're all equally smart. You're going to bring down the higher part of society and you kind of leave the bottom up down there. So I don't, I mean, intellectually, there are levels. And you can't hamstring the kids that hamstring the kids that are smart, the kids that want to move forward, the kids who want to get better, the kids who put it all in. Can't hamstring them to make the kids that don't have that effort or don't have that ability to feel like they're in it, you know? I'd like to play for the Red Sox. Can't hamstring the team to make me feel nice, right? Make me go out there and play for them. No, so some people are just better at things than other people. And you can't just have everyone just, so, I don't know. Opportunities for kids to do better, the kids that want to be better, the kids that have the ability to be better and then have other people... You know, like the 90s when it was crazy and there was different classes where everyone moved at different speeds? I think we kind of need some of that. You know, I appreciate people have feelings. I had feelings too at the time. Fortunately, you know, accountability and achievement matter. And if you want to have a higher level, then you have to provide an opportunity for people to have a higher level. Again, equal accountability, I don't care what anybody's problems are. Kid's a problem, you can't just let the kid be a problem because you don't want to discipline a certain person and feel like a bad person because you're not disciplining certain people. You just can't be. So that's all I have to say. Also, keep Haven away from our kids, please. It's a waste of time. Philip Scolari. S-C-O-L-A-R-D-I.
Thank you.
So, thank you. I had no preparation for this, I hope I did.
Here again, happy to be the agent. We quoted this time, I appreciate that. I'm just going to reiterate where I'm coming from because this all started when I saw my daughter's progress last year in Seabrook. Because what was supposed to be a paragraph for a sixth grader looked more like a third grader. So I was like, "Oh, and continue to be fine." And my daughter's work was okay, classified as okay, passed in as okay. It's not okay for a seventh grader. And again, like Lacy said, and I reiterate that too, it's too late for our kids. It's too late for them. It's too late, they're way behind. There's no way my child can catch up on a fourth grader level in time to go to Winnicott. So something has to change. We've talked about this 100 times, it's not changing. It hasn't changed since Paula. I remember Paula because I had kids then, who haven't changed since then. So something has to change. Okay, so I coach, okay? I coach these kids. I coach them from, I have fifth graders, sixth graders, and seventh graders, and eighth graders. You heard an eighth grade teacher last, last meeting say that she has kids who struggle with sentence structuring. Okay, so I know those kids who struggle with sentence structuring. And I can tell you, they are broken when they come home, okay? They are not trying to be naughty in class or disrespectful. They do feel dumb. You're right, they do feel dumb, okay? They feel dumb and they won't raise their hand and they won't ask questions and they tell me this. So I'm not, I'm not just an adult saying, "Oh, I think this is how kids are." This is what they tell me, okay? They won't raise their hand. They won't look like that dumb kid who doesn't know what they're doing. They will get frustrated with the teacher who's like, "Oh, why don't you know what you're doing?" Because they don't know what they're doing. They don't. They don't know how to sentence structure. And in eighth grade, to relearn how to sentence structure? God, how frustrating is that? They should have learned that in elementary school. They shouldn't be coming from elementary school struggling like this. They shouldn't be. So we can talk about middle school, that's where our kids are at. It's late for them. This is elementary school. It's, I'm sorry, but it's not a personal thing on any teachers. Something has to be done about how we're teaching them. They're not all equal. They are not. They don't all belong in the same classroom. They won't raise their hand if they feel dumb, okay? And, and I'm not saying they're dumb. They're not dumb, they're uneducated. They're in school and they are uneducated, okay? So they're not going to ask questions. And I know the data says, "Oh, put them all together," that's what, the data says. That's what works? It doesn't work. I'm here to tell you that the kids tell me it doesn't work. So change it, change that. Give them different levels. So what, they're in Level A, they're, give them names, give them, give them fancy names. Don't call it the dumb level, okay? Because something has to change. We can't just talk about it. We come here every week, every, every, every month for a meeting, we talk about it. We've been talking about it for 30 years. My daughter's almost 30. This isn't different. So change it, change it. They're not all special ed kids. They're just kids that have been uneducated. And they're behind and now they're in class feeling dumb and their anxiety sets in. And what do they do? They shut down. And now we're like, "Oh, we got this kid that's, you know, won't perform and blah, blah, blah." And it's because he doesn't feel equal to the kids in his class and he's not going to ask for your help. They tell me this, okay? So you guys have to do something to change it. How the classrooms are set up has to change. Period, end of story, that's all I have to say.
Kayla Melmas. I just have to say something here and all those, it's kind of, it's petrifying. I have a kindergarten.
It is petrifying.
It's so scary to think, oh, the fact that my kid could come to this school and get hurt or not be learning. He loves learning, he loves to come to, I'm sorry. A year ago, we saw a little...
It's okay.
But this is not, it's not fair to all these kids that right inside of him, again, loves to come to this school and cries when he has to stay home because he doesn't feel good because he wants to come and learn, he's so excited. And the fact that that passion of excitement to learn can be taken away from him is, it's so, so scary. We, I went to this school, I love this school, I love the staff. There's still so many great staff members we have. But you guys worried about hiring? I'd be petrified as a teacher to come work here because the horror stories that just continue to come out, it's not fair to our staff, it's not fair to our children, it's not fair to the parents, our community that wants to put... I'm a small business owner. I love to donate to the school and do what I can for the school. But it's, it's not being reciprocated to what we can do for our kids and our leaders here for the kids, then what is this? We're a community, we should be coming together to do what's right for our kids. And as somebody that went through like a level-based structure, I think that helped us tremendously. You reward the kids that are in the lower levels. When they start performing better, move them up to the next level. Let them show what they want to do. But why should we be wasting, and I'm sorry, but we are wasting time and energy into kids that aren't going to reciprocate that. And yes, they might have other things going on, but that's when you do bring in the specialists. And that's when you do, you can evaluate better when they're in different groups. But when they're all mixed in together, how do you evaluate who's just behaving because they're being put under peer pressure because, oh, so-and-so's out there?
Just give them an IEP, that's what they do.
So, I mean, the thing is, is we have all of these kids that want to learn. Let's give them that, that's one thing that we can do as a double tier, is give them that ability to learn. And, I mean, I could go on and on about it. But at the end of the day here, it does not matter. I don't care who's getting paid or what's, who's doing this or what's doing that. But I think that we have a common objective here, that we just want what's best for these kids going forward so that they don't feel left out when they get to... It's already scary going into high school. Going to scary, it's scarier when you're going in there and everybody else thinks that, "Oh, well, you came from Seabrook, so you're not that smart." No, I'm sorry, we have very smart kids here and they deserve to be recognized for who they are. That's all I have to say, guys.
Can I say something to you? At the beginning of the year, while I said Anthony was staying...
Phil, can you hold on one sec? I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to stop people from talking. I just want to give everybody a chance to talk because I know that we have a time crunch and I want to give...
We're not having a time crunch.
We do have a time crunch.
All right, well, I just want to say quickly, I hired somebody so I could work with Anthony. And Anthony, I'm trapped, so he wouldn't want to stay back rather than go to high school. But what about the kids that don't have a parent that can do what I'm doing? What about those kids? This is why I'm here. My son's doing okay now. I'm here because I feel like the kids that don't have the, what I'm able to provide and my wife is able to provide, I'm lucky, are going to be absolutely just swallowed up whole by the time they get to the high school. That's what's terrifying. And that's, that's why I'm here. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's what I wanted to say is like, at the beginning of the year, she remembers, I told her, "Anthony asked you to ask her to stay back this year." He wanted me to ask her to stay back because he's afraid to go to high school because he knows how dumb his friend feels in seventh grade. So I just wanted to put that out there. Like, I work with them, so we saw these teachers. The teacher will say, "Oh, he's doing great, he's doing great." That's not the teacher's doing, that's me. I hired somebody so I can give them a couple of hours every night and actually teach them at home myself.
That's so exciting.
And that is not a good testament for our school when I'm, I'm, I'm better at teaching my kid than the people who are professionals and I'm making, you know, a living for teaching. And you've heard me talk, I'm not exactly a teacher. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I come back after, at least like the phone so that they don't get eye contact?
Is there anyone else that has public comment at this time? I just want to make sure everyone gets their public comment.
Really quick, before you come back, Paul, you absolutely can come back. I just want to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak that wants to speak.
Just very quickly, I know myself and everybody have been complaining, okay? But I'd like to make a suggestion that perhaps may help. We had, back in the late 90s, some very difficult situations with some students. Behavioral issues. And some of the children went off to different programs. And I will tell you, as a special ed assistant in a middle school, I see those kids now and they're doing so well. So it was so good for them. The mainstream did not work. We purchased that building right out there. I don't know if by the gym, okay? That building was purchased to house children who couldn't cope, for whatever reason, in the mainstream classroom. And the children in these classrooms got to learn. You know, we didn't have scores up, whatever, but it could be a calm day for a lot of children that may not have had it. All I'm asking is perhaps if you could look into it, I'm sure there's records and there's people still around that ran that program right out there. So I'm just asking, look for an alternative. Mainstream isn't for everybody. It wasn't ever for me and it still isn't.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name's Justin Ware. This may come off a little more superficial than
It's all right.
the rest of us are speaking about. But listening to what they had to say, my issue does parallel a little bit on a lesser level, it's not about education, it's about athletics. My son is a fifth grader. I have been in wrestling for more than half my life. I wrestled for Winnicott. I went to Ithaca College and wrestled there at a top Division III program. Came home, coached Hampton Academy Junior High School, was an assistant at Phillips Exeter High School, then was the head coach at St. Thomas, Aquinas, and Dover. I have been an official for six years. This school offers wrestling, but has closed it off to fifth graders, only allowing sixth or eighth graders to participate. And the main reason I spoke to a faculty member, their main reason that they continued to reiterate through the conversation was past precedence. And listening to the concerns of the other people in this room, I believe that past precedence is a big issue when it comes to everything in the school because they have been voicing concerns for many years with no change. So maybe the past precedence with academics parallels with the past precedence at athletics and we need to start looking into changing that. Maybe not every sport, but as far as wrestling goes, it's a very unique sport where children will only face other children that are their same size. On a football field, my son plays football for the Little Ward program. We have a fifth grader who is about five and a half feet tall and 180 pounds. We have a sixth grader that's about three and a half feet tall and 70 pounds. And they play on the same field at the same time. In wrestling, that doesn't happen. You can have a fifth grader face an eighth grader and if they weigh 110 pounds, they will face 110-pounder. Or because wrestling is very popular in the state, it actually starts in kindergarten in a lot of towns. So you could have a fifth grader facing an eighth grader and the fifth grader's been wrestling for six years and the eighth grader's in his first year. So when it comes to skill and size and safety, there really is no reason to not allow fifth graders to participate in a sport. Other issues that were brought to my attention were financial. Wrestling is a very inexpensive sport. The only equipment needed are shoes, headgear, and a singlet. The school already has singlets and students usually are able to afford shoes and headgear on their own. And if they can't, there are many organizations around the state that are designed to help low-income families. And there's a lot of people in the state that love wrestling. People help, anybody who asks for help. Space. Oh, isn't the lack of space because of participation actually a good problem? You know, if we have to find space, we can find space. There's a lot of space in this school, especially after hours. We could, these fifth graders are allowed in this school. and then told they can't do anything that everyone else can do. They move from that school to this school, yet they're not part of either. So you want to talk about alienation and kids feeling like they can't do anything? Well, there's the start right there. Goes from the classroom to the field, to the gym. If kids don't feel like they're going to be included, they're not going to try. What are these fifth graders going to do? They can go home, play video games, talk to their friends if they've already... They can go to the rec. Yeah, the rec's a great resource. But especially at this age, a lot of them don't go to program. So they are pretty much unsupervised over there. And a lot of them go out and roam the streets and go to Irving and go to Starbucks and walk around the town. Just a couple of years ago, we had a kid hit on Route One because he was at the rec and had freedom to rain. It's important to me, and I know it's less of a big deal than what these other people are talking about, but my son is very excited to wrestle. He got to wrestle a few years ago. I lived elsewhere for a little while, and he was able to participate with the Manchester Police Athletic League at the age of five. And he's been looking forward to the day to get back on the mat. And I just ask to consider that past precedence isn't correct precedence, and that if things don't change everywhere, then we're never going to be moving forward. And if we're not moving forward, we're moving backwards. And it shows through education and athletics. And if you give an avenue for these kids to do something that they want to do, whether it's learn, whether it's participate in a sport, you're going to see kids thrive rather than struggle. You just need to give them the opportunity. And it seems like the opportunities are being held from them at many terms. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has not shared that would like to share something for public comment? Okay. We're gonna... Public comment? You opened at 4:32. Okay. So if there's no one else, then we will close public comment for this meeting at 5:03 PM. And we'll move on to approval of the minutes. So I need a motion to approve the October 10th.
I make a motion to approve the October 10 minutes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Second.
I did it, yeah. And then the 23rd work session.
I make a motion to accept the October 23 minute.
I'll second. All in favor?
Is that everything?
Mm-hmm. So for the sake of time, we're going to go right to the principal reports from both buildings. So the first one will be Brian with elementary report.
Great. So just to highlight a couple of things, I'd like to thank you guys for our team for their work and our community days. For the parents, next week we have our turkey trot, so you'll make up information about that. And starting with our team, the other registration day as well. We had a great discussion on it. The seventh, our teaching teachers from the meeting team training on hard support students and writing and reading for the intermediate test. They're going to changes to the test room. Our system, we've done a great job making sure that our students are prepared for a new government. I think you know that. We have got a new initiative called Seabrook Reads, which is a community group that is pushing library looks like in the community to make sure that students have access to books not only at school, but I went to the community. They're putting great bookshelves. We have a rec already. And they're making sure that those bookshelves are stocked with books that kids are looking for. There's some great pictures of our STEM lab and the work that our team is doing in technology engineering with this party. Students in grade ones and fours are familiar with engineering design process. So I know this one. We'll just couple highlights.
Thank you. And the Seabrook Reads program is also looking for donations of bookshelves. So if anybody has any small bookshelves to get rid of, they are looking for that. That was our request. So. Colleen?
Thank you to the teachers later and parents as well. Hopefully you get a chance to look at the connection that us kids are making out of the field. I think it's really important for our children to not only be in a classroom, but also use the great community. So we have some great shots that you got to see in gray when it's March, a lot of blood a little bit of school floor, and it puts on. And hopefully in the spring, they'll see some eels. They get to check the water levels, get their hands dirty. And probably one of the best ways students can learn is when you get up there and like dig in, literally dig in. Sixth grade also had a great opportunity through another launch discovery day. They worked at the Seabrook Camp in the National Geographic Alliance and a local biologist. So they got an experience where they actually realized you too can be that for a career. You could be a biologist. You could use like... How fortunate are we that we have it right now back down? I don't think they realized what they had around them. So it's great to meet a great lot of people in the shop, allowing them to see that. So great. Went to Salem on the Spirit's family. Yeah, I was like, "Really? You go on to Salem on Halloween?" Just that experience in and of itself is amazing. We see it on the news. Thousands and thousands of people go there. So who knows? Just that we pray. The nice link is, like, you didn't just go to jail. You got to see some gift tree. And also they got to connect to the book they're reading and the writing that they're doing in class. And last but not least, they pray. You're going to Washington University. So we hope that you will buy a read, buy a calendar, eat some pasta. Somebody comes knocking in the door, helps support, because they have not gone around one time. And I think that experience of what they're going to be able to see and do and just being with each other before they leave us and go to Winnicott. It's going to be really jolly. Got it? And that's all right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Continuing business, school board falls. I mean, back up to the board. I haven't seen any drafts or recommended goals from anyone, so we still have your goals from last year. But I would encourage the board to set goals as a part of your work to govern the district. And then the health curriculum? The...
Yeah, I can give an update on where we are with the health curriculum. I should probably just set the table for folks that are here, kind of where we found ourselves last month. There were some concerns on the part of the board with some of the content of the, I guess it was grade five through eight, scope and sequence. And to just kind of give context, what we had done two years ago was we took the state standards, which are required at 306. It's called minimum standards for school approval. You need to have a health curriculum. So we do have state standards. Unfortunately, the state standards were last updated in 2003. So the teachers got together and things like cell phones weren't included in them. Things like computers, kind of modern way for students, really weren't covered by the state standards. So what the solution was, and this is again two years ago, as an SAU, we kind of Frankenstein these state standards and national standards together in a way that matched our spoken sequence, grade five through eight, in order to just provide more of a robust learning experience for kids around health. So that brings us up to last month. The board expressed a few concerns over some of the content specifically around the national standards. So we found ourselves with an opportunity, actually, Brian mentioned it on November 7th, where we had our SAU-wide PD day. So what we were able to do is get the whole group together, probably 15 or so folks in the room. We had all the health teachers. We had counselors as well. We also had health professionals, like school nurses, sat in on that meeting. And like a puzzle, what they were able to do is kind of separate the state and national standards. And that's what you see in your board packets here. There's two columns there. On the left is state, on the right is national. So they were able to kind of unpack those. And what they did was they put them into the spoken sequence. And just to be safe, we put them grades three through eight on this document. So on the left, what you see is required state standards. On the right, what you see is associated national standards. What... This wasn't a debate. It was a mandate. What we are doing right now is taking a look at those national standards. You see some of them in your package. Should be highlighted. What we're doing is picking out the national standards that reflect things that kids should be exposed to that don't have to do with, I think there was a gender identity concern, and then there was some contraception concerns as well. So with those caveats, what we're doing is piecing together those national standards in a way that we can incorporate into the state standards to give you a true spoken sequence. That's the gist of the word. Just to clarify a quick thing on camera and in the microphone, by law and by policy, parents always have the opportunity to opt out of an objectional curriculum. A. And B., with respect to anything sexual in nature, we're required to give forewarning. Usually it's at the beginning of the year, but I think by policy, it's two weeks before. And so parents will get that notification. And no matter where it occurs in the curriculum, parents should have the opportunity to opt out of that just transparently. So right now, that's the update. What we can do is I can formalize this into something that, you know, the board can approve. Or if we get the thumbs up, I can, you know, we can work with this moving forward. However, you guys would like to proceed?
So for clarification, the ones that you're looking to keep are the highlighted on the national standards? Is that correct?
So far, those are the ones that we've identified that we'd like to...
Okay.
I'm not saying that's the end-all-be-all of those. There are probably some others that the professionals will be able to identify that I can...
Okay. So for those watching, evaluate the impact of technology, the use of smartphones, and social media on relationships. Demonstrate strategies to use social media safely, legally, respectfully. And then in eighth grade, it says identify community resources or other sources of support such as trusted adults, including parents and caregivers, that students can go to if they or someone they know is being sexually harassed, abused, assaulted, exploited, or trafficked. And then another in eighth grade, describe the state and federal laws related to age of consent, minor's ability to consent to healthcare confidentiality in a healthcare setting, child pornography, sexting, safe haven, and sex trafficking. And explain the impact that media, including sexually explicit media, can have on one's body image and self-esteem. So those are the ones as of right now?
That's not just one standard. That's a bunch of standards.
Right. Those are... I'm sorry. That's a summary of all of the ones as of right now that you have highlighted that you and the team feel...
Have identified as something that should be incorporated into that scope and sequence.
Okay.
Just because the old one, the state ones are sold.
Okay. So the gender questions from before have been...
Yep. They're safely on the right side.
Okay. And then also the contraceptive concerns as well?
Yeah. There was like a... I don't know where the language was.
Right. But he just said that the professionals can add them in if they felt need.
But he's saying that that would come to...
I'm sorry, that was...
How did you say after that?
The mandate was nothing on gender identity.
Yep.
And nothing on the dental dams. As a form of contraception.
Right. But then if you look, there's also explain common homosexual development, the role of hormones, sexual feelings, masturbation, mood swings. I know. What I'm saying is that...
They're talking about cutting all the ones... We're going to get rid of, so we can be clear. The only ones we're looking to add to the state are the highlighted ones.
The current ones are highlighted. Correct.
Yeah. And then what did you say after that? You said then we talk to the team.
Yeah. I want to make sure that this reflects the sentiments of the folks that are going to be, you know, teaching this curriculum. And I'm more than happy to bring this back to the board as a final document. I just want to make sure we're understanding what you want and providing, in the right direction, providing what you want.
I think we just need to stick to the state standards. If anything above the state standards, parents want to, I mean, national standards and guidelines, once you start including the things that are considered requirements, then you can't promise that the information on the right-hand side is going to be what they stick to if that's what you put... If, you know, if you stick to the state standards, there's no explanation whatsoever on why there's any misunderstanding of other stuff being discussed.
I think you have that opportunity at any point then with anything, even without including these ones in yellow. Any teacher at any time could potentially share something that would be considered inappropriate, which would then be an administrative situation.
That's up to you. I make a motion that would just keep the state standards because that's the only thing that's actually required by the school to teach. So if anyone wants to second it, they can. If they don't, then they can make a motion.
I would like to see an official finished document that can be confirmed and passed.
We've gone through this three times.
Okay. But we're now talking about specific standards that we're highlighting and saying we're now removing the things that we've requested to remove. So that includes gender identity and the other contraceptive issues. Then to me, social media use is absolutely important because it causes a ton of issues.
This says describe the state and federal laws related to the age of consent, minor's ability to consent of healthcare confidentiality in the healthcare setting. You don't know what that... You don't even know what that entails.
You can remove, I mean, you can remove that one if that's something... I don't think we should just blanket statements, say no to everything without doing our due diligence. And that's fine. And you're welcome to do that. And if you want to remove something, then you can make a motion.
So I wouldn't have a problem removing that specific one right there. I do think the social media aspect of teaching kids, because when it comes to sexting and sharing of illicit pictures, there should be some sort of an educational piece because if a child gets texted a picture of an illicit pic, even if it is from another minor, that puts them in possession of child pornography that can get people in trouble.
Okay. So you're talking about which one is that? Sorry.
So all of the social media stuff that talks about evaluate the impact of technology and use of smartphones and social media on the relationships with consent and communications. That's a big one. I mean, we literally have kids bullying each other and saying like body negative stuff on social media. This is something that I feel that we should talk about. I don't want to open the door to certain things that we've, you know, have talked about in other meetings. And I think everyone's made it pretty clear of what they, like, how they want it to go. The one with the confidentiality in the healthcare setting, I think that's a parent issue. I think this next one, explain the impact of social media, including sexually explicit can have one body's image and self-esteem. That one should be included. And I think that is the last one. So I would make a motion.
Do I... Point the boarder? You already have a motion on the table. So you need to find out if there's a second to that motion. If not...
I would draw that one.
So I'm going to make a motion that we institute state standards and include... I will give you the number here in a second. Evaluate the impact of technology, use of smartphones, GPS tracking, and social media. Demonstrate strategies to use social media safe, legally, and respectfully. And...
S H eight C C twelve. Explain the impact that media, including sexually explicit media, can have on one's body image.
Okay, that's good.
So it's S H eight C C one two.
The ones that are highlighted?
We took...
You have those right there.
Yep.
I took the ones off.
So... That is my motion. You need to restate that. I can reread that.
There's one more. Check that in.
You got it.
Who's that?
The last one.
I don't know.
But there's another one that I have.
That's all the social media ones.
Yeah, that's it.
This is the state and federal laws one. This is a different one.
Right. About health and confidentiality.
No, that one, I'm not talking about that.
Identify one of the resources.
We don't have that one. Identify community resources and/or other sources of support such as trusted adults, including parents and caregivers, that students can go to if they or someone they know is being sexually harassed, abused, assaulted, exploited, or trafficked. I think that should stick.
Where is she seeing that?
The last three to nine. Page. IV eight A I one.
No, identify community resources, so we're given permission for them to bring outside companies coming in, like what we just had, Don Haven. That's why everyone was all up in arms, because we supposedly were supposed to approve that, and we didn't.
I think we stick with the social media policies. I think that's what most people have asked for, that's what I've heard most from the community members when it comes to this health class. So I will keep my motion as is.
I second your motion.
All in favor?
Hang on a moment. Second is by Michelle.
Yes.
And then the vault. And it's the.
Unanimous. Now for goodness, Seabrook P T L.
Hi.
Hi.
Heather Emerson. P T L president, vice president. There's some board members back there. Yep, Heather Emerson, Marcy. There's a packet going around. We are, we came to you guys last year, idea about basketball court. It is now up and running to get started. It's gonna cost, so we have some projected numbers. The paving on the back page is about twenty-three thousand dollars for the itself. The first payment is eleven thousand, I think, if you can. And we were going to get it off the ground as of next week during the high school break, but we're told before the meeting that that probably won't happen, you know, because you guys need to accept it. Ten days, I don't know.
We need another meeting Saturday to accept it.
For any donation over five thousand dollars, you need to have a public hearing.
But we had, we did already have one at the end of the year last year. Talked about like what we're projecting.
We just will wait for the location.
So the location is on the second page.
It's like Rhonda's got everything pulled up there in her computer.
Yeah, we literally had.
We did approve it, we were just waiting for the planning.
Okay, hold on. Please, can you clarify?
Okay.
So this would be a donation over five thousand dollars. Last spring, you had a meeting to conceptually approve having them pursue the idea of a basketball court, and so they went out and got pricing. Now they're back to you today with the pricing and the information. And in order to accept a donation over five thousand dollars, by law, you have to hold a public hearing, notice of which has to be given to the general public at least seven days in advance. And so in order to do that, that would have to happen at this point at your, at a subsequent meeting. You're not within the windows to do that tonight. We received this request last week, and no fault.
We've been requesting it since summer, so, yeah.
It did change, right, it did change a little bit from what it was originally going to be, because wasn't it going to be like the?
It was gonna be a soft court, but we had requested to be put on the agenda back beginning of the school year, so that we could get it done for Thanksgiving.
Was that when Rachel came and spoke?
She came at the end of last school year, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so.
Donation there, there's like a donation form that you'll have to get from the principal and fill out a long list of monetary. That's what we have to.
I've never had to do that before, because I'm paying it out of my P T L funds to the person. So even for the picnic tables for over ten thousand dollars, the ten thousand donation to all of the field trips and stuff, I've never had to do that in the past. Usually we come to a meeting, it gets thrown out there, they say yes, and that's it.
So then we schedule a special meeting just to do this for Thanksgiving?
Because if not, then we can't get it done. Because he's really.
That's what we'll do, we'll do this. We'll set a special meeting, hopefully in the seven days, we'll get it done, so we can get this off, because this is very important.
We also had, talked to, you guys know him, I may say his name right now, but most of you don't, the sporting goods, Dick's Sporting Goods G M. We're gonna reach out for a grant for the equipment for the court. So it will be just paved now, because we talked to people, our winters are too hard on the other kind of courts that we were looking at. It's more like a California-based court.
Good weather.
Yeah, lovely weather. And everything will be pretty much done by the spring, it makes it sound like. We're gonna get the company, we're hoping for under thirty-five thousand as a total. The paving is twenty-three thousand, but we're doing half now, and then in the spring, the cost could change differently. He said with materials and stuff, either up, down, it could go either way. So the kids won't be able to go on it after Thanksgiving break, so it'll be broken off.
Well, this is an amazing thing, and we truly appreciate it. I know it seems like a lot of hoops to jump for something that you're giving. We just wanna make sure that everything can go through without any issue. And, but obviously, I can, I can speak for myself, I'm sure the rest of the board, that we truly appreciate the donation, and I think the kids will thoroughly use and enjoy that when it is finished, whenever that is.
The location on the back side is where we've decided to put it. We talked to the principals, everybody seemed on board, hopefully you guys are all on board. As long as you're all. Peter's on board with that.
Okay.
Meeting in seven days.
Yeah.
So in seven days is how?
So you have to post a legal notice, so that would mean the newspaper would have to run it tomorrow in order to have a meeting a week from tomorrow. I don't know how feasible that is. Right, so.
So it's printed on the Friday.
Did you guys have to do that for our donation for the field trips?
I don't think so.
Over five thousand dollars? Yes.
We offered ten thousand dollars for field trips. The newspaper?
Yeah, today's only Tuesday, they can get it on a Friday.
But if it goes out on Friday, next Friday is the Friday after Thanksgiving. I'm just telling you, that's seven days.
I don't know what the person who submits the legal notice to the newspaper is not sitting here at this table. They know what the deadline is, are you getting those into the newspaper?
Typically, it's Wednesday for a Friday publication.
We should be getting it in like this Friday, it's just that you need seven days from that.
Is it seven days or seven weeks?
Question is, will he be able to break ground during Thanksgiving, or do I have to? Is the biggest question.
On Thanksgiving Day, or?
It's during break. I don't know exactly the date, Peter's not here for me to ask, but he did schedule it for next week to start coming and starting today.
Is there a way, and I'm just spitballing here, but is there a way to have a down payment as a separate, don't, I don't know if this is, okay, but having a down payment that's under the threshold that would be given as a, as something to?
I've been wondering if he'll break ground, because obviously, I would say he would trust us if we don't take him until after.
Right.
But he does break ground, because I think he would do it.
Paul doesn't.
Legally though, like how you guys accepted it. I'm not sure of that.
Because I know, I'm pretty sure he will do it, and he does everything else to break ground, so.
He doesn't always get paid right away by the time, because they have to do.
Yeah, he's only asking for half right now anyways.
So that, that.
Which is eleven six, so.
That will be an administrative question that maybe we'll have to have.
Yeah, like give him nine.
Would you say anything over five?
Anything.
Anything over five, yeah.
Can they offer?
I'm hearing them say that's not the issue, right?
Well, if it is an issue, then you're accepting a donation. Nine hundred.
I'll text him, I mean, can we just do this?
Well, is that even legal?
Are they allowed to?
Possible, like, can we do that?
Well, we have legal counsel in the room, so I would, I'd refer that question, but he may or may not know the answer.
Damn, he's good.
Yes, the, so the RSA went up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
And he knows that just the same thing.
No, but the, our policy needs to be updated to reflect, so I guess you could waive.
What if we make a motion to change the policy?
The policy is already, it already has to change, right?
Policy will, is in queue to be changed, to be updated, however it's not been updated, yeah, so.
So in the past, I purchased the things out of our account and then paid for it. Like our picnic benches costed over ten thousand dollars. You guys accepted it as a donation afterwards, as picnic benches. So what's the difference if we started it, if we get approval to start it and then you accept it later?
We've already accepted the planning of it.
Right.
I'm just asking.
We just need to know the legal, we just need to know the legal ramifications, because obviously, we're, we support it, we want it, we love it.
We want it.
We, obviously.
I work here, I need this.
Whatever we need to do, we need to do, but we don't obviously want to do something we're not supposed to. So there is that.
I would suggest that perhaps the board can vote to waive the policy.
Okay.
And then vote to accept the paving portion, the twenty-three thousand.
Yeah.
Which is less than the twenty-five technically.
Technically.
Okay, so I.
We did two separate pieces, so.
Yeah, so later on in January, once we know when the grant will pay, what we have to pay out of pocket, if it's over the.
I'm, I make a motion to adjust the policy, or waive the policy.
Waive the current policy on the accepted amount of donation before the threshold.
Okay, sorry.
So it's policy K C D?
Okay.
Are we making a motion to waive policy K C D?
Yeah. For the acceptance of twenty-three-ish?
The paving donation?
The paving donation to begin next week.
It's approximately twenty-three.
In approximately.
That it could go fluctuating.
Or are we not accepting?
Yeah, so you just, so just a motion to waive the policy, then you'll make a motion to accept the donation.
Okay, so I make a motion to waive the policy.
Second.
At seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Sorry that took so long, ladies. I'm gonna make a motion to accept a very generous donation. And then all in favor?
Aye.
And I just have one other suggestion. Perhaps we can set up a meeting with the principals, Sue's manager, myself, to work on logistics, and also to finalize the location. I know, is it, I, I think there's some, we'd like to minimize adding pavement. Maybe we can place it on existing pavement somewhere.
The way the drop goes in the back and where the buses have to go, it's absolutely impossible to predict. But according to what we were talking about, like the plans, the future would be, someone's gonna figure it out at some point, years down the line anyways. We've talked to the principals multiple times about the location.
What's the issue with the location?
Well, it's, it's on existing grass, so.
You're paving about the only grass that you have access to outside.
We have a whole ball filled with re.
Yeah.
But not during recess.
No, we're fine, we can keep the location.
It's not a huge area, I mean, it's gone out there. We, we, we're out there at the ball, and he said if we put it in the pit area, it kind of affects the buses, they're not gonna be able to swing it. There's, it's just, this location's the best location, Peter agreed, we have him out there with us. It's not taking a ton of grass, I mean.
It's taking a hundred by fifty of grass over there, which the kids use.
It's a junk pit, I believe, for cars.
It's a mess of a junk pit, we're gonna actually.
We're actually gonna, we're gonna rebuild it out somewhere else. We already planned to do that.
It got moved from the woods, I guess, area, and it, they literally just dug a hole with some sand there, so we're gonna get like a real one done, that'll be next.
That's our next project, to do that.
So it really doesn't affect anything. It's near the pavilion, so it's right there, I mean, you guys really don't wanna take up the grass.
No, the location's fine.
That works.
I think as long as building administrators.
They're gonna, they're gonna use it as much as that's probably getting utilized right now, so.
Yeah, and it'll be pickleball, it'll be volleyball, eventually we can change it to sports where it's gonna have the lines, the holes for everything. The teachers can change it out.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right.
Do we need to have a meeting?
I mean, if everyone is okay with that location, I just wanna make sure that there are ducks in a row.
I wanna schedule it now with you, if, I need to have that meeting with you before next move.
I think we just need, as we proceed with the project, that we have just good communication to make sure that we're coordinating with Peter and the vendor, we work with Matrix all the time, so very comfortable with them as a vendor. They're great, so.
Yeah.
But I think the board is good with that location and.
Guys already got all your homework and stuff on it, it sounds like you guys have planned it. Talk to the facilities, talk to the principals, let's get this thing going.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we're gonna go to meetings, dates, and times, because we are going to need to enter non-public soon. So meeting dates and times, we had discussed a potential move to a six o'clock timeframe to allow more people to attend. We do, our hope was originally to try and adjust this meeting, it did not work out with schedules. It does pose a problem with a lot of other conflicting meetings that are already happening. And so this timeframe has been in place for longer than I've been on the board. And so it will take some adjusting and some discussion as to when and how we can meet. I know that there are other things that have been scheduled, like coaches, things, practices and things that have been scheduled around current meetings. So it would just be a matter of figuring out that. But we will want you to know that we do hear you, we are trying, and we are doing our best to figure out how to make that work. And we don't know yet what that will look like, but that's, that's what our goal is, to make it available to more people.
So we actually have actual dates to talk about. So you have a November twenty-eight budget review meeting scheduled for four-thirty. If the board wishes, we can move that to six o'clock, but we'd like to know that today.
I've already said that I'm open anytime at six o'clock, so it's up to you guys. You pick a date and I'll settle for six o'clock if that's what people feel is more feasible to them.
I can, I can make the four-thirty meeting. I can't do a six like that.
We both have basketball practice, for both teams that we're coaching. So November twenty-eighth?
Yep.
We're staying at four-thirty?
Yep.
Okay, December fourth, you have your second budget review meeting also scheduled for four-thirty, it could be moved to six?
I can do six at that date.
I can make that one work.
So December fourth at six.
Which I'm sure Rhonda will send out.
To adjust the calendar. Your December twelfth meeting is your regular business meeting, it is scheduled for four-thirty. The only December date available that doesn't have conflicts right now for other districts and budgets and school board meetings is December twenty-first.
I'm at work, so I'd have to keep the December twelfth meeting at four-thirty.
I guess we'll keep that, that's four-thirty.
So four-thirty on December twelfth?
Yeah.
And your January ninth meeting is scheduled for four-thirty, that could be moved to six.
Perfect. That day, they can?
Because, because it's deliberative session?
Yeah.
Or is it your public hearing, sorry, public hearing?
That's public hearing.
The ninth is a public hearing? Yes, your deliberative session is in February, so your January ninth is your public hearing. It just says, just say it on my calendar, but I don't know.
It is a public hearing?
It will be.
It will be, okay. So I would, I would be okay if that moving to six, like that, the ninth?
I can do six, I can have Jermaine cover basketball that time. It's just all the days that have been scheduled to come.
So is that a yes for moving that one to six?
Yep.
So do you relate to being moved to six?
Yep.
Your February fifth meeting is already scheduled at six, because that is the deliberative session.
Okay.
And March would be after election. Currently, it is scheduled for the nineteenth. And the nearest.
Um, currently, it is scheduled for the nineteenth, um, and the nearest available date that, to be available at six would be Monday, March eighteenth.
I, I feel like we should hold off on March, because we have potentially new or existing people, and we don't know.
Okay, so we will hold up on that.
Yep.
So, again, we are doing our best to make changes.
Just note the January ninth meeting is, is just gonna be a board meeting, the public hearing is the, uh, budget committee.
August with the budget committee.
They typically haven't scheduled it yet, but I can know of, typically, it's on the fifteenth of January, and that's a head, direct department, or potentially a town hall.
Okay, so that will come through after that.
So that, they'll schedule that.
Okay, all right. Um. Not yet, no, no. Okay. Um, can we accept the donation? Take a moment, okay. Uh, Fosc has put through a donation, um, for the, a new liner for the ice skating rink and water to fill it, which is very generous. And I will make a motion to accept the donation of ice rink liner and water valued at fourteen hundred dollars from the Friends of Super community.
Second.
And all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. We don't have much time, so I guess it's up to the board whether you want to start a conversation on a topic or start your non-public.
Right, well, I actually wanted to talk about something, I'll question, so you don't know what I'm doing.
Okay, is, is it in regards to something on the agenda?
No, but it's pretty important.
We have two items that, we're table one, then that one again?
We're trying, we're, we're trying to figure that out.
Multiple, data presentation as well.
And, okay, that's how it scores, right? Which is why.
Yes.
Oh, I'm mumbling at my computer because it won't open.
I just don't know what I'm typing when I just.
Don't type my, don't type my numbers.
Nothing, yeah. We're trying to figure it out, um, we have multiple things in non-public that need to be addressed, and we have meetings to attend at six-thirty. So, we have to figure out that.
So this is, I mean, the non-public stuff has to get done.
It's most important, so.
Because it's very important, this is, but this is all the, this.
That is also.
This is all the scores and the, the data from the scores, so. Can we schedule?
Yes, there is probably zero time to schedule an additional thing at that. And, and based on what we just, the conversation we just had on adjusting.
So, I guess if we can do a quick rundown of the scores, I mean, here's the, the bottom line, everybody knows what the scores came out as, they've been published, they've been posted. Um, they were gonna go through a line-by-line with the snapshot, I believe, I don't know.
I think it would be helpful for Dave to do the presentation, and if, and Lauren, and if you want them to do it in abbreviated version.
Yep, sure.
Two minutes, one minute.
I mean, it's thirty seconds if you can.
You could do five minutes, or we can tailor it.
I knew this was gonna be done.
Uh, yep, sure.
Why do we schedule it?
I'll try and take you, but. Uh, all right, here comes the quick version. Uh, so, uh, what you're looking at are the SAS scores, um, for, from twenty-twenty-three this past spring. And what, I think what's helpful to, to, a helpful lens to look at these scores is through a longitudinal lens, which means following a class from third to fourth, the fifth grade, or from fifth to sixth, the seventh grade, to take a look at how those same kids are performing year after year after year, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, yeah, next slide, right. Uh, the SAS are scored on levels one through four, just like our report card. Uh, a level one or a two is considered not proficient or approaching proficient, a score of three and or four is considered to be proficient. Concerns for AI grading of writing in twenty-twenty-three, so the state threw kind of a wrench in things in twenty-twenty-three, they actually used, uh, artificial intelligence to grade the writing portion of the SAS, grades three through eight, it didn't work very well. What, what actually happened was whenever students used direct quotes from the prompt, um, it actually counted them, counted their scores down, uh, because they considered it plagiarism or use of a prompt. Um, so it was, it was a bad thing for everybody in the state, uh, so I don't think it disproportionately hurt Seabrook, but it's something that we all need to be aware of. So this year, they're giving the writing test in March, um, and they're gonna be doing hand scoring, actual people are gonna be scoring the writing portion. Uh, that's fine. What you're looking at right here is a snapshot of the twenty-twenty-three scores, um, and this is ELA, and this is literally the test that we gave this past spring, grades three through eight. So you see the proficiency levels, twenty-five, thirty-four, thirty-four, et cetera, you do see a gradual, um, improvement over grades three through eight at Seabrook, uh, elementary and middle. Table below, uh, obviously gives, uh, test information, the thing that you're gonna want to be concerned about is on the right-hand side there, performance distribution. Uh, for example, fifty-three, twenty-two, eighteen, seven, those are scores of one, two, three, and four, that's percentages, okay? Um, so you'll see that, for example, eighteen plus seven, right on that first line, that's twenty-five percent proficient, uh, and it goes all the way up to grade eight, so that's how to read that table, I'm sure you can read it at home as, as needed. Next, we'll go into the longitudinal scores, and I'll hand it up quickly.
Um, this is fast, but, um, basically, as Dave was talking about, one of the ways to look at student growth is by following one cohort students across time, rather than just looking at snapshots, so that's what we put together here. This is our last year's fourth graders and the year before, so that's them in third grade and them in fourth grade, and if you can notice just visually looking across at the red, the red is below proficient, and then in fourth grade, you can see that there's less red. That's in third grade, there were fifty students above proficient and approaching proficient, and, and in fourth grade, there was sixty-four, so fourteen students went from below to proficient or above in one year. But that's the type of growth that, that we're looking for across both schools. Same thing in fifth grade, you can notice that there's growth across time in one cohort of students. You can move to the sixth grade, sixth grade, again, you're noticing that in sixth grade, there's, you know, just by looking at the colors, there's less students that are scoring a one than there were the year before. And what we're trying to do with our students is move them into proficiency levels, move them fro, into the yellows, into the greens, and into the blues, and you're watching a group of students across time. Yep. Same thing, we see growth in seventh grade, so the story again, seventh grade is the same, is the same, our last year's seventh grade, this is our current year, eighth grade, um, we're noticing a growth across time for that group as well. And that's for the, for the language arts portion, we just kind of bulleted out some of the things we're doing this year for action steps to improve achievement in language arts in the elementary school and in the middle school. We're very targeted with those conversations, we're putting together professional development for teachers, we're looking at our programming, um, we're adding enrichment, we're adding professional development embedded in school and after school. We're adding tutoring for students after school, and each one of those bullets has lots of rich material inside that in terms of achievement. So, we are to address the concerns of parents, and, and very glad parents and teachers are here, we are addressing those concerns with achievement. I can answer any questions about any of those bullets, but for the sake of time, I won't read through them.
Yeah.
But they are addressing achievement for language arts. Does anyone have a question about that slide?
Yes, hi, so I, um, was looking at those, although you have, so level four.
All right.
I, I need to say deep pit, because no kid is really deep pit, right? So if you look at them, level one's an A, level two's a B.
That's opposite.
Right, like, we're all real broken.
It's opposite. Four is an A plus.
The ones are low, and the fours are high.
Yeah.
Oh, and this four?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I was like, um, I was like, opposite? I was like, um, I don't know what's going on here. Okay, all right, okay. My, my stomach just dropped, I'm like, ah, that's.
So.
Okay.
So Lauren, three is like an A, and four is like an A plus.
Right, so if four is exceeding standard, and a, and a one is below proficient, right, so it's, it's that opposite, right?
Potential. Okay.
Yep. Um, so we are heading in the right direction, if you look at our scores pre-COVID, um, and now where we are today in each of those grade levels for ELA, we do have the same for math, so.
Yeah, I think we'll hold that.
We can hold, okay? Um, I'm always happy to answer any questions you have about programming, achievement, how we're working, achievement, and math language arts.
So.
At a different time or with a meeting.
Okay, so.
We have, yes.
Can I just clarify very quickly, four is not an A?
It's not an A, we're, we're.
Four is an A, just to clarify very, very quickly, it's, it's, it's a different thing to scale.
Four, it's like a plus, plus, plus.
A long time ago, we did a presentation to kind of just sort of point out, like, think about it like a bike, um, think about a one as being training wheels, think about a two as being on a tricycle, think about a three as riding it without any help at all, you don't need any assistance, and four is ripping a wheel. It, it, that's really, like, that's how, just so we're, just, like, the four, in a GPA, yes, but in a competency basis, different. Took me a while to wrap my head around, but I got it.
Awesome. That's a good analogy.
Thank you.
Right.
Can I just add, I, I want to say thank you to our teachers, because as a result of COVID, and, you know, this is stuff that's been done in the last few years, this is stuff that we are responding as fast as we can. And our teachers are running our trike belts, like, spinning a million miles an hour, and they're doing it, and we're seeing results, and.
So every year, we look at, every year, we look at achievement, and every year, we look at data as an administrative team, and every year, we set new goals with new, and it, with new professional development, respond to teachers, we respond to students. The list that you see here, that's for this year. We had a different list last year, and a different list the year before, and they all weave together, they weave together to cause that growth across time. That's why you're seeing growth across time.
We're not with Uricum app, we're not seeing growth.
Because it's cohesive, because we, we have a cohesive through line from kindergarten to eighth grade, we have that in English, and we have, we have it in the ELAs, and we have it in math. We have room to grow, all of us know we have room to grow, and that's exactly why we're being targeted with what we do have on these lists. And that requires teachers present it, and parents, and parents, and parents, and so.
So, looking at the.
I don't.
Quick question, Dave, I understand the conferences, and I understand the grades, maybe it's a suggestion.
No, why?
Middle school eighth graders going into, in conferences and letter grades, having a. My son out here has complicated, is complicated understanding, he has to have his competencies and his letter grades. But he kind of lost, because in seventh grade, he started the competency with the letter grade, so he, it balanced him out, but the kid's coming now, going into high school?
Mm-hmm.
Would it be smart to maybe tell them about letter grades in eighth grade as well, and show them letter grade scores?
Mm-hmm.
Because I know kids that aren't passing their competency, you can't go to the next Spanish level, but they pass their competency.
Are we the only ones doing competency, competency levels right now in this school, in the district?
Every district is doing competency.
So.
Yeah, we're all.
Why do you want to cut it not?
They're doing a dual, they grade everything twice.
Oh, that's it.
Yeah.
Dave, a dual, dual report, we had that two years ago, when we were here at the middle school.
Two months.
So, um, Meredith made a request to just pause and pick up the.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to take math at a separate meeting.
Pick it up at a different, at a, at a, at a separate meeting, we happen to do that.
Okay.
And if, and if we want to revisit anything that you saw here at the next meeting with more detail, we happen to do that as well.
Okay. So. Okay, we're, before we go into non-public, budget review Tuesday, November twenty-eighth at four-thirty.
Four-thirty.
And the budget review, the second one is Monday, December fourth, we changed that to six o'clock.
Yep.
Which those things will be posted, the school board meeting on the twelfth of December will be staying at four-thirty.
Before we go into, before we go into non-public, I really need to talk about this real quick. So, there, this week has been, like, overwhelmingly frustrating, to say the least. Um, a lot of parents calling, I'm not gonna get into the topic on why, because that's nothing but a distraction, but the amount of phone calls that I've received this week has been more than in the last three years of being on the board, of people requesting things. And I really know this is not on the agenda, I know this is completely off-subject, but I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels, but I am making a motion that that we make a commission of, that we create a commission of a feasibility study for the Seabrook to separate from the SAU twenty-one. Um, and I think that Seabrook needs to be the sole client in the study, we should be the ones to provide the information, pick the company that does the study, and be one hundred percent involved in any information that they need, it comes through us as a board. Because I think at this point, everybody can agree that we, I myself do not feel like that we are being held at the same level as the rest of the SAU twenty-one. I mean, and an email that I received today really upset me that I won't get into, but it pretty much indicated that what, that respect that the parents and the other schools get, that Seabrook is not being held at the same level. And, and I think at this point, we need to actually look and see if we can stand on our own.
We did, we did that with Jessica when she was on the board.
No one, no one approved it, no, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
No one stepped up our.
Can you have a motion?
I will second the motion. Then we can discuss it.
Okay.
I do.
Aye.
John.
So I think it's important that we at least look at it, I know we spend a lot of money, and that's the biggest driver here is tax dollars, and a lot of the parents feel that our tax dollars are not being very well-used, and I know for a fact that my phone's been blowing up almost as much as Kelly's has. And parents want to know if it's possible that we can stand on our own, much like Hampton does. We pay the lion's share of the money into the SAU, and it, to the parents, it doesn't feel like we're receiving the lion's share of the money back. We don't have necessarily equal voting rights on the joint board, which then affects us with stuff and policy here. I think it's at least important to have a study commissioned and done, that way, we can present to the voters, like, this is what the bottom line dollar, your taxes might go up. Your taxes might go up if you find out through a study that it's gonna cost more money to stand alone, but that's something that the voters can make a decision on. But I do think it is time, from the amount of people I've heard from, that we at least conduct the study and have that, that done, so we can see if we can stand.
Who's paying for this?
Oh, it's coming, it's coming out of the SAU, that budget, I mean, if we have all this money to do all this other stuff, then, I mean, we just paid almost ten thousand dollars to somebody in the last two months. To basically do nothing that we have, we had no idea about what was done in the last two months with somebody for ten thousand dollars. So, it's gonna, there, there's gonna be a way that this study is done. We have the money, Seabrook pays six hundred and what, fifty-nine thousand dollars compared to the other schools, they pay what, the highest one is two hundred and fifty or two hundred and thirty thousand dollars? One school pays seventy-two thousand, and they have the same say as us, that's insane.
I say we conduct the study and find out if.
To even ask who's paying for that is crazy. We have the money, we're not poor.
So we have a motion and a second, and all there.
Everybody here?
I'm, I'm the first.
Okay, so four to one? Okay, that's four to one.
Okay, we're gonna go into non-public, so we can make a motion for a real one.
I make, this thing will pop up, so I can read it.